Now I pause.
Come everyone to the Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Today is March 7th, 2024, Thursday, and I'll ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation, ground, this is all thirteen and twenty-four.
Thank you, everyone. Roll call, Maureen.
Hey, June Daly. Andra Lou Millard.
Here.
Anne Jorsey.
Here.
Timothy Ziegma.
Here.
Brian Rogan.
Here.
Joan Veely.
Here.
Matt Hamel.
Present.
Michael Pastuk.
Here.
Alternate. Did I say it correctly?
Okay.
How was it pronounced, ma'am?
Pastuk. We'll try very hard to remember that. John Dyken.
Present.
Biella, alternate.
Sure.
And everyone is present and in person, so you have a quorum with the regular members.
Wow, that's fantastic. Thank you, everyone.
Oh, well.
All righty, lap of applause. And on to the approval of the minutes for February 15th, 2023. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Do we have any corrections?
Uh, one correction.
Okay.
Um, under approval of minutes, item A, uh, the motion was made to approve or accept the minutes by Tim Ziegma and seconded by Andra.
All right.
I have something too.
Okay.
Two things, two different things, actually. On the first page, under excused, uh, Michael's listed as a commissioner, but maybe it should be stated as alternate commissioner.
Yes. In what page is that?
Um, on the, on the first page.
Who's present at the meeting?
Oh, okay.
And then the other piece that I have, um, it's probably not a big deal, but, uh, page eight of nine.
Well, that sounds frightening.
Of the third, no, no, page eight out of the nine pages, the third sentence is motion was approved, all except Commissioner Biella. Um, it might be helpful to say that Biella did not participate in the vote for clarification, because the sec- the attorney had mentioned that wording. Um, so it shows a little clarity that it was approved by all except Biella, who didn't participate in the vote.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't catch that.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve with the, um, discussed corrections.
Okay, motion by Ms. Jorsey. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Millard, for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved.
Abstained.
Abstained by Mr. Rogan. And, all righty. Commissioner Business, Bonds Reductions Releases, 1685 Orchard Road Priority LLC Site Bond. This is a site plan amendment, application of Brian McPhail Select Energy Development LLC to install commercial roof-mounted solar panels at Bright Feeds. Wait a minute. No, the bond reduction for 1685 priority. Oh, I think you read it out. That's why I just sort of rolled right through. Okay, sorry, my, my bad. I own that one. So how is everything over at Priority Electrical?
Okay, so we do have a couple of oddities to this. Um, the, um, on the site bond sheet that was, um, calculated up in April 2023, um, in order for them to proceed with the C O, um, an outbuilding was bonded for $2,500 to be removed. Um, the pump and mechanical, there's mechanical equipment pumps in it, um, in the building. That's what the building was for. I think it was perhaps in, uh, he didn't know what was in it at the time when he was starting his process to get approval for the property. Um, and so it's our recommendation that the commission, um, uh, make an amendment to the approval to allow that to remain and then we'll move and, you know, remove the requirement from the bonding, um, because the, it does have things in it. It is on the north, um, west, the, what, in the north side of the property behind their existing building. It's really not, I don't think it would be something that the commission would have an issue with, and it came with the property. Um, you know, as far as, um, visibility, that's what I meant with an issue with visibility. Um, the second item is that there's a dumpster enclosure highlighted also on the bond sheet, um, for Phase One of his project, which is the first building. If you, those of you that were on the commission at the time of approval will remember that the, um, development was approved for two buildings, Phase One and Phase Two. He's not going forward with Phase Two yet, um, but finished Phase One, and, um, that's for Priority Electric is occupying that part of the site. In his business model, he has no intention of having a dumpster in Phase One and therefore wouldn't need screening of something he doesn't have or need. So like to remove that requirement from the site bond as well. The landscaping and all that has been installed. All the other items have been, um, you know, so we recommend that the bond be then, therefore, those two items removed and the bond be reduced to the 10% maintenance bond, which needs to be held for 12 months after completion. And that'd be on the amount of 6981 being held, 6911, I'm sorry, being held.
Okay. No, 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 and I, you know, I'm trying to keep, keep up. I really am. All right. So let me ask you about this dumpster enclosure. So we had, the site plan said there was a dumpster enclosure in Phase One, but now he doesn't want to do the dumpster.
He doesn't have a dumpster. He doesn't have a dumpster to enclose.
Is there a dumpster?
No location. He does expect a dumpster to be put in, in Phase Two, and so at the time he'd get, he'd get that. We could fit, we could bond a dumpster at that time. If he put a dumpster on site without, um, if he changed, changed his mind and decided he needed a dumpster, it would become an enforcement issue that he put in a dumpster without screening, and then he'd have to properly screen it in accordance with the plan. But us, the town holding $2,500 for something that won't be completed in 12 months because it's not something that is intended to be completed, doesn't make sense, because he's not having a dumpster.
All right.
That's, that's what, and, and he's operated for almost a year without one.
All right. So I can understand that, but this, the space for the dumpster, as it's originally cited on the plan, would remain the same? So when he goes to do the second portion, okay.
If, if it was associated with the Phase One, you'd have to put it there. I believe the dumpster location is actually between, I looked at this a couple of weeks ago, I'm sorry, but I think it's between Phase One and Phase Two was actually his dumpster location, um, more oriented towards Phase Two.
No pad there for dumpsters?
I don't believe so. I don't believe so.
I'm, the building is a decent sized building right now. And, and, you know, I would say that a building that size should have a dumpster, uh, you know, uh, and, and at least the pad should be there because it's planned in the second page, Phase Two, anyway. But if, if the pad's there and it, and all of a sudden the building that's there needs a dumpster, they throw it on the pad and just throw a little fence around it. But, uh, and it does have a second phase.
Yeah. Plan. How long has he been operating?
Almost a year. The C O was, we, we figured this bond was calculated in April of last year, and the bond is calculated or received in order for us to proceed with the C O.
Yeah, I'm not sure, um, how, I got other commissioners. Do you have any thoughts on that? I mean, Tim brings up an interesting point. You can always do the pad, but, I mean, the pad could also fall apart or whatever, or deteriorate, especially if he's not going to need a dumpster.
Yeah, I just, I'm just, uh, just a building that size is going to produce.
Yeah, but I hate to put a dumpster out there. There's not going to be a use for it. Then it's just going to collect water and, I don't know, it's going to be ugly.
With their cut wires, their electric company, their wires, they strip bars, they, they.
Yeah, but they gotta be doing something with it.
They're doing with their waste. There's gotta be some waste coming out of that building.
I do think a lot of the waste they have is, um, on site. You know, they go work someplace and they have a dumpster that they bring to the place they're working at, or they otherwise dump on there, um, you know, not bring the junk back to the, they go to disposal facility with their.
I just worry about enforcement issues. You know, you said maybe that's our, our thing is enforcement issue, but you know what happens? So enforcement issue, you don't get spotted a long time and it's hard to.
Well. Well, what's the pleasure of the commission? Other comments or?
I'm comfortable with staff's recommendations.
All right.
My recommend, if I don't, if you don't mind, um, I think with the fact that he has the Phase Two approved, but hasn't asked for any permits or anything else with regard to it, I think the opportunity is there, then there to add it, um, again, if he keeps the rest of the, ourself. He has a number of years to do that.
Question about the, the pumping station. Is that a town pumping station or was that?
No, no, it's pump.
Was that pump due?
What pumping station?
I don't know.
Was a building there with.
I know there's equipment in there.
There's a pump station inside.
So, so engineering went out and investigated that. Oh, I'm, they just said they were pumps. I forget that.
Is that that building?
Doing that.
Is that that building in the back?
There is, uh, an easement through there, but I don't believe it has to do with a town facility. I believe it's for that property.
Doesn't the easement go out until they load it?
Yeah, but, but I don't think I, it could be.
No, that's been all grassed over now.
Yeah, I could ask, uh, we could get the answers to these questions and you could delay the decision until the next meeting if that's your pleasure.
It's a town pumping sewer station, a pumping station, water pumping station or sewer station. Then we, we got to, it's different because we thought it was just a building.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? It's one of the, uh, a small shed or something. So, and I don't, there was no facility on that building, on that land, or what's there? So it's gotta be a town pumping station or something.
It may have been, um, pumps for the wells, um, on the land because it had irrigation.
No, it could be. Well, could we?
Makes sense because they did have quite a few greenhouses out there at one point.
Yeah.
Could we maybe come up again, or could we maybe give an approval for item two and three and keep one open?
Can reduce it by less.
Yeah.
Maintenance amount you could.
Just because we've got to figure out what's that mechanical or what's in that building?
Unfortunately, Google hasn't.
No.
Affiliated, neither have ours.
But I don't want to hold him up on the other two, and I certainly don't want to, if we can decide them tonight, I think we should be able to. But what's the pleasure of the commission? Guys, ladies? What?
Just bringing this up to the. Yeah, I mean, you know, there's no problem.
What? Well, yeah, but you want, well, well, so somebody, anyone got a notion to make a motion?
Trying to word it.
Yeah.
A moment, I'll try to pull up the site plan.
Well, we could talk about the dumpster.
Might be a little, might take me.
Make a motion for the commission to grant.
So how do we, uh?
I'm just trying to make sure our agendas keep low, moving forward. So if we can, if we can give.
So make a motion on items two and three and leave one table number one?
That's fine.
All right. I'll make a motion.
Um, my only concern is that.
How to get the numbers right?
Maintenance amount is affected, not, it's not the amount, but.
Twenty-five hundred included?
To, if you're reducing it to the maintenance amount, then you're.
Shortchanging ourselves?
Yeah, because then it's no longer includes the items. It's just maintenance for those items.
All right.
So, um, you could reduce it to, I, my suggestion and would be, I think what makes sense is the maintenance amount plus the $2,500 for the outbuilding removal to have more information about it.
So what does that bring you to 9411? Nine thousand four hundred eleven dollars?
Yep.
From, up from your 6911?
Yep.
All right. So is that your motion, Brian?
So I will make the motion to reduce, uh, the bond to the minimum of 10% excluding the, um, outbuilding until we have further information on what that mechanical equipment is for and will include, um, the removal of the requirement for the dumpster enclosure.
At this time?
At this time.
All right. We have the motion. Do we have a second?
A second, just to clarify that the, um, Ms. Jorsey, amount.
That the bond will be, um, reduced to 9,411 dollars.
Okay.
For clarity.
Ready? Any other further questions? Very none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Okay. Yay. Um, next up, we are going to go into the site plan amendment, application of Brian McPhail Select Energy Development LLC to install commercial roof-mounted solar panels at Bright Feeds, 76, 76 Fuller Way, property of 76 Fuller Wallway LLC in the G I Zone. Um, what do you have on this, Maureen?
Um, I believe they're here to present it.
Oh, okay.
I believe it's online, um, Brian McPhail.
Okay.
So.
Good evening, Mr. McPhail.
Good evening. Yep, I'm on, um, I'm on both the phone and my computer, and I've got, um, our project manager, uh, Patrick Davis on the line as well. We've both visited the site. Um, to be a thousand percent honest, I don't, I don't know why we're here or why this job, you know, has gone to this department, but I'm willing to answer any, any, any questions you guys may have.
Um, I guess my big question at this point is how is the resolution, uh, for the noise and the smell problems that were out Bright Feeds that we heard a lot about?
Hmm. So that, I, yeah, was there a separate meeting, um, held with the property owners about that recently?
Look, I.
Maureen wants to chime in.
To the issues, so both his question as well, and I'm sorry, I thought this was explained to the applicant or part of their team at least. Um, there were several people contacting our office on these applications. So, um, sometimes not everyone on their teams, um, understand what we've explained. Um, so Bright Feeds did have the noise issue that was a zoning by, um, complaint or a complaint. Noise is not, um, um, controlled by the zoning department. We don't oversee noise complaints. However, facilitated along with the town manager, our Z E O, um, P D, um, the health district, um, a lot of people got involved, had meetings with Bright Feeds, and you'll remember, um, I believe we reported to you a few months back that they were working, and maybe it was Z B A we reported it to, uh, they were working on, um, fabricating equipment to go on the roof to reduce the noise. And they did that, and they put something temporary on a couple of weeks ago. I think they, I think the final, uh, equipment's been put on. We did get a, um, email from the main complainant that said, this is great. We're not hearing it anymore. We're satisfied with regard to that. Um, and that's been also confirmed by several, um, town staff members, um, who live close enough that they came in and told everyone about the noise as well. So, um, I had asked that this application for the installation of solar panels be delayed, given the fact that if they had to put equipment on the roof to dampen the noise, then they don't want brand new solar panels being put on the roof when they've got to do work on the roof. So that work has, you know, and, and we'll make sure, and I assume that the solar company will make sure that the, um, the operator of the business is done with his roof, any roof work that he's anticipating before they move forward, but that's would be at their own risk, you know, if they had to remove something. Um, in order to clarify for the applicant, the planning, the zoning regulations call for roof, for solar panels to be, um, in commercial and industrial zones to be approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, it's a site plan approval for roof mounted, and so this is a site plan approval to the Planning and Zoning Commission for roof-mounted solar panels in accordance with the zoning regulations.
Okay. So on that note, I have a quick question because I also heard there was ex, um, complaints about smell. Is there food being burned in this?
So that, the, what they do, and I actually have a whole little packet from our zoning enforcement officer. Let me see if I can find it because I threw this together very quickly. Um, the, there are several agencies looking into this.
Because my concern was if they have, um, equipment of that, you know, size, you know, doing massive burns of bad food that they can't, you know, process, then would be having these solar panels on the roof, a fire issue.
Um, the, by the other departments will, including the Fire Marshal's Office and the Building Inspector, will go through the roof-mounted solar panel application. They have to sign off on it as well. So not finding the little tile I said was, here it is. Maureen Scott. Um, the smell is actually being looked at by the Department of Environmental Protection in a report that we got from, I highlighted it all. Um, they're, they got a complaint about foul odor, odors being smelt over 2,000 feet away, et cetera. The report then has a conclusion from Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection that no violation of R C S A Section 22A dash 17418 or 22A 17423 were observed during the inspection, and they were, um, advised to provide, um, additional complaints as they continued. Um, there's, was a whole report from Buss and O'Neil in, in that, and I believe I have a little more information on Bright Feeds from the zoning officer that I'm not finding. Um, so again, that is under a purview of a different agency than zoning.
What I'm hearing, so that I can understand, is that the smells are still being emitted, but the state is overseeing that now?
The state is overseeing that, and they're, so they do process food. They, I was not in the plant. Our zoning officer went in the plant, um, but it was described as a plant, Planning and Zoning Commission, that would be processing food or making it into animal food. Um, and then I think the final producing of the animal food is, is done someplace else. This is the first step in that, and that's what the manufacturer proposed to be doing on the site.
I just didn't know if there's going to be like a, if there's a large furnace in there.
Yeah, that I, like I said, I haven't seen the inside equipment. They didn't have the inside equipment in when I, they were working.
That's pretty intense. I know, and that's where your smell's coming.
Okay, that's where the, the smell's coming from. But since it's been going down, uh, I had questions in my mind. The approval site plan that we did was on 76 Fuller Way building that was in place. Okay. Uh, they made the, uh, comments that all stuff would be done inside the building and no exhaust out of the building basically, uh, and no noise from the building. Okay. But they didn't use that building. They took that building down and built a new building.
They did come back for a modification.
Okay.
They came back because they needed to, they were planning on raising the roof higher.
Yeah, I remember that.
They came back because they did find they had to rebuild. Instead, it was on exactly the same footprint, and then they came back because they installed the, the tubes to go to the outside with a containment, um, covered area.
Yeah.
On the east side of the building, and they came back to the commission again for that, um, um, loading area, uh, on the east side of the building. So they did come back to the commission for all those.
Right. I have two quick questions. Um, it sounds like the sound has been dealt with, which I'm happy to hear. But since this is a site plan amendment, um, can we place conditions? Like, I know when we were talking about potential cannabis regulations, we were talking about a condition of zero smell admittance. Are, um, is that something that if we were to approve this, we can make a condition that deals with the odor as well? So.
I think it's an entirely different matter, and it's the, the.
I didn't know if it just opened it up because they're doing a site plan amendment. Did it open it up to?
I, I don't think it, it does. I'm not a lawyer, but I don't think it does. I, I mean, anything can be argued in the judicial system, you know, somebody appeals a decision, they, you know, they can make the arguments for, for that, but in my opinion, it would be a different matter. This is, um, not affecting the operation of the facility and, and a substantial change to the approved, um, site plan that was related to a, a, um, site plan use in the zone, not, I don't believe it was a special permit use. I'd have to.
Anything, it is. Any other commissioners? Hold on.
Special permit.
Hold on, Tim. Any other commissioners? Just to, because I want to go this way, then I'll swing back. No? Okay. Uh, did you have a question? Yes.
Yeah, Maureen had just mentioned that the different departments needed to approve it, and the only one I see pending maybe is Engineering, Rutherford Fire District, and Board of Police Commissioners on the bottom of the document.
So for the permit, the, um, Fire Marshal, well, they would have seen it anyway. We route them to all the departments, um, but the Fire Marshal also has to physically sign off on the permit itself, a building permit for installation of solar panels, any, most buildings.
All right.
Okay.
And, uh.
Yeah, can we, I guess we've addressed the solar panels. Uh, solar panels, uh, looks like to go be basically covering most of the building on top. Uh, and my concern with solar panels is that they don't ever mount them all the same height and things look like ocean and, and stuff like that. Uh, and we've always asked, is it going to be seen from the ground level? You know, is there going to be any, uh, preferences or anything that's going to block the, the view of the solar panels or, or does it need, need to be? Uh, but, uh, you know, my thing is to make sure they get mounted correctly and, and, and look correctly up there. Uh, but the roof may need screening. We, the mechanical sound roofs, we usually try to screen, and I don't know, I haven't seen this new building, so I don't know what the, the structure of the building is.
Well, I think perhaps the applicant in his presentation can talk about the installation and the view from the road, et cetera, I would hope.
Definitely. Um, can I, can I share my screen on here?
Oh, that, I would like that because I'm trying to pull up the things, and they're not very clear.
Um, so yeah, let me just pull up. Where do I have my screen to share?
Where do I have my screen to share? Is that working?
Yes.
So, uh, that's the construction dogs.
We're seeing an aerial view right now. That might, oh, that's the new building, I believe.
Oh, okay, so I am, yeah, I'm on multiple screens here. So what I was gonna say is the, the newish, or I don't know how recent this building is, but um, Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's about, you know, fifty feet tall. So driving down this dead end road, you, you can't see the surface of the roof. So in our panels, if I can switch screens here, I don't know if I'm showing, like, this is a similar install, this is the roof we did in Worcester, but the panels we're installing don't sit up at any angle. These are, you know, fixed mounted at the same plane of the roof. Um, on these L feet, you know, the panels maybe on the outside are like eight inches over the surface of the roof. So you're not going to be able to see those panels from any of the, you know, definitely from the road or any of those buildings around there, because I think, I think that building is the tallest one on that um, dead end road, full of road.
It is the tallest and it's, it's over fifty foot. I had to use a sixty foot um, scaffolding to get up to roof elevation to do a roof inspection.
Got it.
So you can't see the roof. You barely can see the roof edge, but you certainly can't see the roof structure from the ground, even from a hundred and fifty feet away, you can't see it.
So that's just um, you know, at least related to the, the subject of the visi- visibility of the panels themselves.
Just your concern, okay, that's, that's good, I'm blessed. Now, I just have a real quick question because I know that Maureen had men- mentioned that the smell that's being um, emulated from the building is currently being overseen by the state. Uh, are we receiving updates on those reports? Or do they know how long it's going to take for a um, a, a resolution?
Um, well, I think we have the report that said that they um, don't have, you know, they didn't find a violation of the odor codes. Call them odor codes, I don't know what the, you know, those exact provisions are titled as. Um, and again, our zoning enforcement officer has been the liaison, but he's been in contact with them as well as the town manager's office as far as, you know, trying to stay on top of it from the town, town side because it's um, while it's under um, while we don't have zoning regulations that relate to odor, it is um, obviously a concern of the townspeople. So therefore, the town officials are doing our best to try to facilitate resolution as we did with the noise.
Yeah, I, I guess my concern is that as we move into the warmer months, um, that it might get a little bit nasty. So I just um, a- and how this relates to solar panels is that I don't have a problem with the business wanting to put solar panels on. I just have a problem with the steps that are being made. In other words, where, where there's an issue at hand and there's a public concern, I have a problem with nodding and saying, oh yeah, you can go ahead and improve your business and put solar panels on now. Because I don't know what's going to happen in the next few months and I don't know where the resolve is going to be with the, with the odor. Now, you can say, well, there's two separate issues, Joanie, don't worry. If it's a venting problem, I'm sure we can do it. But I don't know if you're going to put these solar panels up, they're going to end up taking half of them down because they're going to have to do something to the structure of the building to mitigate the smell. And so that's my concern, is that looking ahead um, by condoning, by saying yes to the solar panels, um, it might actually be a problem down the road, especially with, with the summer season coming. And that's my concern.
I, so my, and again, not the one that would litigate this. However, um, my take would be that um, it's the not within zoning authority to deal with odor. Um, but providing a, a resolution with the um, advisement to the owner of the property and um, and applicant that this is an ongoing concern and that they should consider proceeding at their own risk for any work you do, realize that there may be down the road some authority to which that they would have to undo it. And that that would be their risk to, to proceed with. But on the record, acknowledge, put out there and then owners and applicants taking that responsibility as theirs. That's.
All right. Again, that's a clear way of stating.
Um, what, my experience, not from any.
Yeah.
Look.
Uh, Ms. Millard?
Yeah, I, just to confirm, Maureen, the um, noise issue that they had, I know they had a temporary fix in there and they were waiting for the equipment to come in and it was supposed to come in, didn't come in, they were waiting. What's up there now, is that the permanent fix?
I had, so I thought it was, but now you guys have raised that question and I'm not sure what the zoning officer told me. I would have to double check with the zoning officer. We do know, know that it's been resolved to the extent where the primary complaint that was notifying the offices, several town offices, has said, thank you, this has been resolved. That's.
Could we get clarification that it is the permanent fix before we sit there and say, put panels up there, please?
I'm actually, I just think, just to perhaps get that answer. I don't know that I'll get the answer.
That would be up to Maureen.
Yeah, do that. So they're from the solar company? The, the applicant that's here is from the solar company, not from Brightfeeds. Brightfeeds authorized them to make application.
Really quick, let me ask, is this, the purpose of the solar panels is to um, provide the building with electricity? A hundred percent or? Okay.
A portion thereof, not a hundred percent.
Okay, a portion, wow.
Correct.
Those are a lot of sa- what do you figure you're going to be running at, about seventy-five percent providing electricity?
Seventy to seventy-five percent if possible, yeah.
Okay.
I do want to bring your attention to the document that's Brian raised on the screen, which is a black and white overlay of the roof, can you guys see that?
Uh, yes.
So you'll notice that there's a portion of the roof structure that is blank.
Correct.
In the upper right-hand quadrant of the roof. And to my understanding, that was because there are certain mechanicals and ventilation things in that corner that we were intending to avoid to give them adequate space to maintain as well as to have roof access for that purpose. And you'll see a few other cutout areas and those are mechanicals that are relative to the building, HVAC, ventilation for restrooms, what have you.
Okay.
But you can also note, just for your purposes, there is a legally appropriate setback on the roof edges according to the HJ. So that's not only building code, but fire code. And you'll notice that there is a void in the center of the roof going from the horizontal left to right. And that is conforming to um, what the fire department as H Dan, in, in their standing would require for roof access for ventilation.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
While we have the roof guy with us, anyone else have any questions? No, okay, we're just. Yeah, okay.
You know, in my view, I don't think we can impose a condition um, having to do with this application, dealing with the smell. But Maureen, is that something that maybe our public health authority could be sort of?
Yeah, also been involved.
So in my view, then that's the end of really our, we shouldn't even, it's not germane to us anyway.
As well as the state.
Okay, thank you.
In a collaborative effort of many departments and agents, several departments and agents.
So there is attention to this matter.
Just quite a bit. This matter.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, well, fortunately and unfortunately, I have other staff that's working on certain things, so I don't know all the details of everything.
Okay, and we have Mr. Edge with us now.
Six months ago, I knew everything, no, I didn't know.
Thank you, Maureen.
Prevision, they call it provision.
It was more in the now.
I, I just want to let you know, I just did talk to Jonathan, the, the CEO. He let me know that yes, um, temporary fix was in before, now they have the permanent fix that is in, is on the roof. Told me that they have gotten a number of messages um, from neighbors, a couple actually said, thank you. One actually said, are you still operating? I can't hear anything anymore. It's a good thing. Um, so, and I mentioned to him that when he has an opportunity to get in touch with the planner um, about the smells, et cetera. Um, again, they bring stuff that comes in, um, they can't control the smell of it, but I told them to reach out to Ms. Juisty and, and discuss it anyway. So the good news is they've been very responsive and I know that um, it took a little while. Um, but it seems that everybody from a sound perspective seems like they're in a good place. So, thank you.
Terrific, and so alternate Steve, I know John's type, Michael, any questions? Okay, right. Anyone else? All right, so have a notion for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with staff comments, uh, with the condition that uh, none of the solar panels impacts that noise dampening equipment. And I'd also act, uh, ask as an act of good faith, not a condition that they um, seriously look into dealing with that odor.
We have the motion by Mr. Rogan, do we have a second? Second by Ms. Jorsy, do we have further discussion? Then all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Okay, terrific. And now we're going to go on to the public hearing, so do we have a, do you have a call for the public hearing?
I don't have one in front of me, do we?
Do we, do we have one or these are?
I think, no, the, the public hearing you're going to hear is here and I'm sorry.
Well, I know that.
Not used to getting all the items.
Okay, well.
Actually has to have on, let me see if this is it, here it is. In the wrong, let me see, four, I think, Thursday, March seventh, or that's today, right? So just start, start at the top and make sure I'm handing you the right thing. Okay, okay. Thank you, it should have been in, do you have the other folder to be read? Ah, it's all in. Okay, we're good, we'll just work on that. I don't have it in front of me. Oh, yes, it's A, B, C, so the agenda, the agenda incorrectly says A, B, B. It should be A, B, C, if you look at a corrected agenda. I wanted to say it on the record. There probably, that was already, that was already, oh, gone.
Cheat, cheat out. And I'm going to apologize in advance if I butcher anybody's names. Town of Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission Notice of Public Hearings. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings at their regular meeting on Thursday, March seventh, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. The Town Council Chambers, Berlind Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearings in person or remotely as provided below. A, zoning map amendment application of Pavan Kumar, member of, member Ra Jarji Swari Realty LLC, S H R I, V J Allah Kishmi LLC to change the zone of twelve fifty-one Berlin Turnpike, sixteen dash three dash one thirty-eight dash eighteen A from S P D D to Berlin Turnpike one B T one zone and thirteen oh nine Berlin Turnpike sixteen dash three dash thirteen eight dash one and one fifteen Middletown Road sixteen dash three dash one thirty-eight dash eighteen from R fifteen to Berlin Turnpike one B T one zone. B or C, zoning map amendment application of Anja Shak- Shakahan on behalf of Kerry's Re- Real LLC to change the zone of eleven hundred Berlin Turnpike sixteen dash one dash one oh six dash seventeen and portion of eight fifty-seven Worthington Ridge sixteen dash one dash one oh six dash eighteen from Berlin Turnpike two B T two to Berlin Turnpike B T one zone. The applications and related meeting materials are available at the Planning and Zoning Department, Berlind Town Hall, two forty Kensington Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Dated this twenty-second day of February twenty twenty-four at Berlin, Connecticut. Brian Rogan, Secretary, Berlin and Planning Zoning Commission. New Britain Herald Legal Notices slash Classified Advertising Dates of Publication, Monday, February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four and Monday, March fourth, twenty twenty-four.
All right. Um, thank you, Brian, good job. Okay, the public hearings for the zoning map amendment for application of Pavan Kumar, uh, member Ra Jarji Swari Realty LLC. Um, this has been, this is at twelve fifty-one Berlin Turnpike. And the reason um, I'm going to skip reading through a lot of this um, is because this has been postponed um, by the request of the applicant.
So the applicant is requesting postponement to the three, March twenty-first meeting, you'll have to make a motion to do so.
Okay.
Make a motion to postpone uh, this matter to March twenty-first.
All right, motion by Ms. Jorsy, do we have second? All right, second by Ms. Millard, further discussion, all those in favor? Aye, those opposed, so moved. All right, item B is the special permit with site plan amendment application of Dom, uh, David Camacho, Camacho Enterprises LLC uh, to add the proposed automotive use dealer use per the Berlin zoning regulations. And um, I believe that we also received word from the applicant on this one as well, requesting a postponement.
So I received an email this afternoon um, requesting a continuance due to their um, ability to have an engineer do some revisions to the plan um, with requirements on them. As we did, did our review, we found there were some things met with the applicant, um, his surveyor, others. And um, they're, we're working on devising the plans before they bring them to the commission. So he's asking that this time it be postponed to March twenty-first.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to postpone this matter to the March twenty-first meeting.
Okay, great, for Ms. Jorsy, do we have a second?
Oh, second.
Second, second by Mr. Rogan, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Zoning map amendment application of Angie Shukhan on behalf of Kerry's Real LLC to change the zone of eleven hundred Berlin Turnpike and portion of eight fifty-seven Worthington Ridge from the Berlin Turnpike two or B T two zone to Berlin Turnpike B T one zone. Okay, and I believe the applicant is here, yes, hi, how are you? Thank you for your patience. We're actually moving a lot faster than we normally do, so this is a blessing.
I'm Kerry Gagnon, I'm the owner of Kerry's Real.
Yep.
Anya Skian actually works for me. We realized that you guys did a zone change on a property, the property is away from mine. And there's a property right between us. I'm here to apply to see if I can get the zone changed to match with the zoning that you guys have changed already. So if you need my address, I'm at sixty-six Cedar Street, Newington, Connecticut. I'm actually from East Berlin, Connecticut.
Okay.
And, thank you. I do, I, for public, uh, I was gonna say it for the public, that's a nice cup of coffee in your hand too, so.
Okay.
I'm uh, the Dunkin franchisee in town, been here forever. And um, I think it just makes sense that we changed one zone, one property, that we matched the other two. And it just opens it up for better.
More flexibility.
Customers and more flexibility for tenants, yes.
Okay.
For lack of words.
All right. So, I'm going to bring up on the screen, this was the map of the area. It's just south of the interchange coming off Mill Street.
Yeah.
Get on Route 9, I mean, to get on Berlin Turnpike South. On the east side, the Dunkin' Donuts is in this parcel, and then it's the portion of is it 857, I believe.
Yep.
Worthington Ridge. The, that parcel goes all the way through. So this is the portion that's already has the commercial zoning on it. The lot has split zoning through the middle of this parcel, and it, these parcels here are three parcels that were amended by Mr. Hayek. I think the presentation was by Attorney Sullivan in June of last year. I just want to call to your attention that both applicants, the applicant last year as well as the applicant this year have asked for the zoning, which is SPDD 2, or was, was SPDD 2 on this whole section of prob, of, of the turnpike. SPDD 2 with an underlying zone of BT1. Both made the request to modify to remove the SPDD 2 and change the zone to BT1. The, when the Hayek application was approved the last year, it was the, it was modified in your resolution to keep the SPDD 2 overlay, but only changed the, you know, changed the underlying zone from BT2 to BT1. So I wanted to call that to your attention.
And on that note, if I may, if I knew that was going on back then, we would have done it all at once together.
I believe the, the commission raised the question at the time.
They did. That's what brought it to our attention, and so that's why I'm here tonight, because I just think it makes sense.
Which begs my next question. The pink stuff that you have up there on the, on the, what does the pink zone belong to on this display? And I, I have, for lack of better words, it doesn't show.
I'll figure it out. That's the, the blue are the properties being requested to be rezoned. The pink is the rest of the strip, which is SPDD 2, underlying zone, BT.
Maureen.
And the property to the that surrounds this, you can't see the property lines on here because when we overlaid next we did the
Yeah.
graphics, the property lines went away. But this property that is basically pink, a little bit of the yellow, is land trust property. So that wouldn't actually be subject to development anyhow.
It wouldn't be.
Would not be.
Yeah, because they've got wetlands.
Property.
Yeah. So this is all land trust. And so is that, is that sliver of pink located between the blue properties I have?
No, no.
That's not land trust.
And if I.
This, this is, I'm actually going to bring up the GIS.
So that's?
The actual property lines in one second. Um, this one
That little sliver.
Is part of this lot that belongs to this R15 and Historic District. That's what this, this odd line here with the stripes is the Historic District line.
So if I remember correctly, there is a lot of wetlands over there that acts as a natural buffer and protects Worthington Ridge.
Yeah.
So if I may, that property was mine. I donated it to the town, and it's wetlands. It can't be built on.
Okay. That's nice of you. Thank you.
Very well.
I really appreciate that.
Thank you. My second time doing it.
I just, that little sliver just really bothers me in there, but I, that one between the two, but.
Let me change my share, and I think it'll make it obvious as to where the proposed lines are. Again, this is a owner facilitated text amendment or zone map amendment, so you know, usually if the town was facilitating it, we would do swaths, and you know, perhaps, or look at into how large an area in, in the case of an applicant coming in with an application, they're doing what is in their interest. They'd have to get buy-in and sign-offs from all the property owners in whatever area. So this here is.
And I think it's pretty wet back there, so.
I'll bring up a couple of different layers first.
If, if I may, there was a, an area that we could have put a driveway through and did some buildings in the back, but it would have been re-stuck in all the neighbors backyards. And so thank you, and they're good customers, so thank you.
Discuss many, many times. Basically because it was so many small pieces, and we talked about consolidating all the properties. And this is basically what's the stone, I guess. Consolidate all the properties.
I actually bought that property from my attorney, because he didn't know what to do with it. So I developed a little plaza, and it's really nice, but I'm having a problem
Yeah.
leasing it out. It's been vacant for years. So this really just opens it up to more customers, less tenants.
Okay, all right.
Want me to just walk you around this map a little, or are you good?
Well, I, I think I'm good. And, well, anyone else want to be walked around by? I know that we have a couple people who want to address the commission too, so. All right. Who wants to go first? This gentleman will go first.
My, my concern with what's proposed here is.
Hi, could you?
Okay, Brian Hall. H U L L. 811 Worthington Ridge. So I know the property very well because I back up into it, and my issue is moving from the B2 to the B1 is the lack of the buffer. Now, I know you have the land trust there as a buffer, but site buffers aren't, aren't there. I mean, there's no screening, and we think changing it is even going to decrease the screening from the properties that are there, and, and probably the biggest issue is the on the existing property is the menu board that's lit up all night that just shines into our backyards. And although you have the land, if, if it, if it was a residential buffer against that property, then again, you would have been prepared to do the trees or whatever else has to go in, but because there's the land trust now, which again, we appreciate you doing that. Goes up there and everything else. There's a lot of property around that area that backs up into residential, not directly, because it's just separated by the land trust, but those properties are, are still going to be visible from the residential areas along Worthington Ridge.
Let me ask you, Mr. Hall, are you talking about the drive-through window at the current Dunkin' Donuts?
Current one, correct.
Okay, all right. Is this the first time that you've contacted the town regarding the the light or the site?
We can, I, I mean, with what's there, it's, it's kind of like it was there and we're living with it, but what this allows maybe to happen with, with new businesses going in, there are new types of businesses. It was this change that, okay, we can live with this, but we can't live with other things that might go in there that this zone change may allow.
Well, I think that if, if this zone change goes through and there's going to be some adjustment to the property, seeing that's still with the current owner, I think that we might be able to address that property as well. You should not have to, and, and obviously, that's why I asked the question. Is this the first time the town is hearing about it? Because sometimes when we do planning stuff, we try to think of how it's going to impact the neighbors. So I appreciate you coming and telling us about it, and I'm sure.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, my, I, I guess what, what I would ask the commission to do, because again, we're not sitting here doing a petition of, I mean, he's, they've been great neighbors over there, and I've used that Dunkin' Donuts. I use the vet over there. I mean, I know the property, and, and I think it's been well maintained.
Yes.
But any development that goes on there, we just like it better screened to the residential area, and especially the Historic District area, so.
No, I, I think that's fair enough, and I don't think the applicant will have any problem meeting that.
Have a private discussion about it.
About the current light situation going. Get some nice little arbor vity or something that'll break it up. I don't know.
If I may speak for a moment?
Yes, back to the microphone, you go.
Honestly.
Come on down.
Sorry. If that menu board is on, is it on 24 hours? Do you know? Because.
It's on at least till 11 or 12.
Wow.
Yeah, we close at 10. So if that's not on a timer, I can see to it that it is on a timer, because I'm
That's wonderful.
I'm at 8:30. I'm up there. I wouldn't know if it's on all night, but I could figure that out.
It's our current state of affairs.
It's time to make the donuts, so.
Not anymore. Okay, thank you. Thank you. So a good compromise there. Yes, Mr. Edge?
Chris Edge, 240 Kensington. We were very surprised when the applicant had come in before, because when they came in for economic development, we were in favor of the change from his property all the way up to the Dunkin' Donuts property. We were very surprised when nothing happened. There was no reach out. There wasn't anything to carry. Because it didn't make, I mean, you can do what you want. I, I was very frustrated with the situation because I would have happily facilitated making it happen once instead of twice, but more importantly, the main reason why this really works as well is, everybody knows that plaza, it's been there for 25 years. The building on the right, which was built for a bank, still has a dirt floor. The BT2 zone doesn't work down there. Couple things that the BT1 zone will bring to bear, which could have potential. Daycare, dry cleaner, enterprise rent a car. There's, there's a handful of things that aren't your traditional retail, which could fit there, but really wouldn't be incredibly detrimental. Again, I don't see big, huge billboards in sight, but I think the opportunity of, of giving the property owner the chance to do some more creative things would be good. He's the owner of the property. It, it's not going to become one of the used car lots that we really don't like the look of. That's not his goal. So I mean, that type of a use, even though it's in the BT1, is not something that Kerry's going to go forward with. We're actually, we've already had some discussions about folks that we're going to talk to together, including potentially even looking at, okay, can we, can part of that other building be used for a bank? Again, banks don't need square footage of that size anymore, but maybe there's a possibility with the vet leaving as well. So I think this is some opportunities and really gives Kerry an opportunity, and I think working with them, if we can get the building leased up, it may also help across the street as well. Across the street, you have a vacant property, it makes it a little more challenging for people to go, well, why would I do something here? So I, I think it's a good thing. And again, we've they've been tremendous both as, as a business and a property owner, and we're hopeful we can work with them in a way. Again, we want to make sure it does work with the neighborhood, because the Historic District is a very important part of our town. But I know very rarely has Kerry said no. He's willing to make it work because he wants to invest in the community and vice versa, because we need our Dunkin', and he loves Berlin.
Everything's rise on Dunkin'. Okay. Anyone else on the commission? Ms. Miller?
Uh, yes, going back to this map, where the existing buildings are, there's a section that comes out. Is that the section that is, belongs to Worthington Ridge? Is that Art Powers? Where is Art's?
This is his property.
That, that entire section?
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I changed the share, because I just thought it would be easier.
It's all that land.
Let me get back to it.
No, he's, no.
So. So, Mr. Powers' property, his house is here.
Yep.
Can you see me?
Okay.
I can do it with this one. This one's a bigger, oop, there we go. Art Powers, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And unfortunately, the pop-up.
So his property goes all the way out to the Berlin Turnpike?
So.
Does it?
This whole thing right here is his property.
So it goes all the way out to the Berlin Turnpike?
So the, the zone layer on here is sorry, I gotta use a different screen. The zoning layer, if it loads, hopefully. Okay, so, so you'll see this designation right here is changed, which is why I did the other map that you have on your screen, because these three properties were changed. This lot is Mr. Powers' lot.
Okay.
857 Worthington Ridge. It has a zone line that goes through it. This here, this line is the zone line that goes through a lot of these properties. So their proposal is to rezone the portion of his lot that is currently the commercial zone, not a residential zone. The yellow line is where it changed to the residential zone. Should any of the property owners that have these through lots, this one comes partway down. There's a few others that, that also go through. They would have to, in my opinion, divide their lot to have a commercial use on the Worthing, on the Berlin Turnpike side. They'd have to create a lot that was compliant with the R15 historic and Historic District regulations on the Worthington Ridge end of the property where the residential house usually, for most of them already exists. And if they wanted to do a commercial use on the rear side, would have to create a new lot that's compliant with zoning. Right now, the BT1 and 2 zones require a minimum acreage of 2 acres, for instance. So, you know, they'd have to have that compliance in order to create a lot, and then propose to the commission development of the lot under whichever zone you end up with.
And part of the wetlands goes through that property that Art owns?
So the issue with the wetlands is, you know, the wetlands on the GIS is a depiction from multiple sources, and it's not mapped on the GIS. It's, it's a this is roughly where wetlands are. You can see the whole entire property that is developed with the Dunkin' Donuts by Mr. Gagnon, as well as this whole section of 857 Worthington Ridge. You know, the swath of wetlands goes through. Exactly where the wetland sits and whether it is encompasses the whole site, the soil scientists would have to determine that on each parcel.
And this will go in front of wetlands, correct?
If, for a development proposal, if wetlands are identified when they do a survey and soil survey, they would, that would prompt wetlands review if that's what experts in the field determine.
Okay, thank you.
So I would just like to, for, for the record, again, as ended to summarize earlier, and, and anyone who needs it, you did have some considerations and discussion and concern with regard to rezoning the properties that Mr. Hayek proposed last June, and that's the considerations included the different types of uses that are allowed in a BT1 zone versus a BT2 zone. It opens up a bunch more uses. Again, I think the evaluation and, and a decision to have consistent zoning. It would be consistent with that decision, should you decide to approve it. But I do want to point out that having the SPD the overlay, again, I just want to point that out was part of your, your decision at that time, and seems to make sense. It allows for the, as you stated at that time, it allows for the SPDD overlay combination of parcels to do a more regional development and plan. With regard to a zone change, the Planning and Zoning Commission should consider the, the Plan of Conservation and Development. Since that decision, you have a new conservation, Plan of Conservation and Development. The 2023 plan was adopted. And the study of the SPD, the SPD overlay and the SPD2 zones, which is the east and west sides of the turnpike in this area, were all identified as a high priority for study. This area on the, on, with the SPD2 does allow all the underlying zone uses regardless and compilation if somebody chooses to go forward with that overlay. does allow all the underlying zone uses regardless and compilation if somebody chooses to go forward with that overlay. It is more uses and the and is currently understudied by the FHI, which is the consultant that's doing our zoning analysis. So I wanted to point that all out to you. The, well, they're not actually in study yet. The, the Economic Development Commission is in the process of engaging FHI for that study. Again, it's something that you've worked on, all of you, when we were working on the Plan of Conservation and Development anyway, so you're familiar with it, and I wanted to point that out. The SPDD, the BT one and the BT two zones both have the same purpose. And the intention is to support development of underutilized sites that are commercially industrial and industrials zoned and that have infrastructure and systems that are already in place or readily be extended or can readily be extended. So I just wanted to point out those things in the Plan of Conservation and Development. I think overall, it would be consistent, from my opinion, to do the rezoning. However, some consideration should be made to that SPDD and the FHI doing the zoning analysis.
Anyone else? Yep. Diane?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second? Second by Mr. Hamel. Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. Alrighty, thank you. Motion to continue?
Are we continuing to March twenty-first?
I believe so. Yeah, next meeting.
The advice is to just continue, keep one meeting at a time.
Oh, I see. Okay, so I will make a motion to continue item A, I, I'm sorry, A, one and two, applications of Little House Living to continue.
Alrighty, motion by Ms. Jorsy. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ogan. All right, further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved, next.
Just a reminder that the court hearing as well, an update.
To our attorney.
Jennifer Capola for the record. Just by way of update, the Wetlands Commission did approve a modification to the previously approved permit to conduct regulated activity. And so that piece of matter has been resolved. There is going to be a motion to withdraw of the pending Wetlands appeal. Because when the eight thirty G application went through Wetlands, that was denied and appeal was brought. There, there had been a prior approval on the application that you had denied. I don't know if everybody remembers sort of what happened in those circumstances. But they did submit the settlement plan to Wetlands and it's been reviewed as a modification that, to that previously approved permit. And the modification has been approved. That's what they did earlier this week. So we're all set with Wetlands. Council's going to file a motion to withdraw. So the eight dash eight N hearing that's required by the statute in the practice book is going to be held, and I think I announced this last time because I think we may have even had the date then, is going to be April first. So that's Monday, April first at ten AM, and it is a remote hearing. Notice is going to publish in the New Britain Herald. And you do have to, if you want to participate in that, you do have to contact the clerk. So that information is in the notice and that notice will be filed with the town clerk as well. Along with the final stipulated judgment and the motion to withdraw. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So that takes care of that. Next, we have the special permit for the site plan application for David Camacho, Camacho Enterprises, and I believe that we have also postponed this.
Yep, that one's already.
Yeah, that's already done. Now we're onto the zoning map, item C zoning map amendment application of Anji Shikhan on behalf of Kerry's Real LLC to change the zone at eleven hundred Berlin Turnpike and portion of eight fifty-seven Worthington Ridge from Berlin Turnpike two to Berlin Turnpike one zone. Okay, so commissioners, what would you like to do? This is back to that parcel. Dunkin' Donuts.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mr. Zigma. And with this, okay, do we have a second?
I second with some amendments to the motion.
Yes, please.
I would like the amendments to include doing it in the same way that we previously did with the other zone that we recently rezoned next to it, which keeps the overlay, but changes the underlying zones and any of the other conditions that I can't recall off the top of my head.
SBZ.
Overlay.
Overlay.
Yes.
BT one, so it's going to be SPD. B, E one.
I accept that. First accept that.
Whatever. Okay. So we have a motion, we have a second, everyone. John, you look confused, so everyone.
Is that one or two, that S, SPDD two or is it SPDD one overlay?
It would go to the SPB one.
So we've.
It would stay with the two?
So the zone is SPDD two with an underlying zone of BT two.
Yes, so my motion was, or my amendment to his motion is to keep that overlay, but only change the underlying zone to the Berlin Turnpike number one from two.
Did I write, did I type it wrong? I'm one of the.
It's BT two currently? What did I just say?
It's a BT two zone currently. We're going to one, correct?
Right.
Okay, I read it wrong. Yes.
SPDD two with, but change the underlying zone from BT two to BT one.
Yes, exactly. Thank you for clarifying.
What you're looking.
Yes.
Motion accepts that clarification.
So we have a motion, we have a second. So further discussion, concerns?
I have a I do have a concern. I, I just want to make sure whatever we make a decision here is that we're keeping the neighbors on Worthington Ridge in mind. And that we don't complete to swap their lives. And I'm hoping this is the right decision.
Well, I think that we'll find that when it comes up for a site plan and when we do the review. And I'm glad that Mr. Hall spoke, because these are all concerns for that whole strip. Nobody, whether you're in the historic district or just on a regular road or a regular lane, nobody should be subject to, to any unnecessary noise or, or light or anything, not as long as we can prevent it and keep it from happening. So neighbors come first. Alrighty, so good point, and I think that's something we should keep in, keep in back of our minds. All right, so going back to the final vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, so moved. And I have every faith that they're going to take care of that lit takeout order box very soon. And Mr. Hall will let us know. All right, okay, terrific. Thank you. All right, now we have, we have the planners' notes and then we have a proposed executive session. So I guess we'll go, you said you had loads of planners' notes for us.
So I'm sorry for this in advance. And I was just actually sending out Zoom for the executive session to the people we're going to ask you to invite in. So if you just bear with me while I get off of this screen. No, no, I just, that's why I, I had to set up that Zoom. Didn't have time earlier today. Okay, so let me go to all the items we have. So I'll try to do the informational things first, so that they're just quick. The town is working on upgrading mechanicals at several of the schools, HVAC equipment. There, I don't believe that, that replacement to existing facilities, mechanicals are required to run a school, raises to the level of eight twenty-four review, but I wanted to confirm that with the commission, as well as they would require screening. And whether or not you would authorize the planning staff to work with facilities, public works, et cetera, on screening. Or wonder if you would like them to prepare a formal site plan amendment to the commission. These are at Griswold Hubbard. I don't remember the other school. I didn't, you know. I do rely on a few of you for feedback when necessary, particularly Chair. I appreciate that and I'm, I'm sure the other town departments would as well. We have provided them with the regulations with regard to screening. Alexa sent those to the the other the people who are organizing it, yeah, Mike and others. So I do think that will get handled. The next thing I have is, put little stickies on here so I could easily find these. Starbucks had got their CO. Yay. Or, or if they didn't actually get it yet, they're getting it, but I believe they got it. I think they had a soft opening. So, but when DOT approved their plan, they asked for, they required a couple of modifications. I wanted to bring those to your attention. Really no one online, so this way I would rather. One of, can you hold that, Alexa? So the, and I could bring it up on the screen if you want me to. But one of the things is when you come off of Farmington Avenue, they had a concern with the people that are, so this is Farmington Avenue, this is Porter's Pass, the drive-through is going this way around the building to the front. The driveway where it's coming out here, they were concerned that people coming in would be trying to turn left this way to go up here to the parking area. They required that to become a one-way out of both these areas and put a stop bar so that cars wouldn't pull in, try to turn left and then back up into the road. So that was one of their changes. No, one way, so when you come out of the drive-through, the people that are coming in to this entrance off Farmington Avenue have to come off Farmington Avenue and go straight. They can't turn left towards the building. There's parking here, there's parking here. They can drive around the island to get there, or these are through parking spaces or all the regular. Yes. Yeah, the, the Farmington Avenue entrance and exit is remaining the same. They just can't come out of the, or rather, you just can't go towards the wrong side of the drive-through, really. It's keeping the, the cars coming out only at, from the drive-through and the front of the building. You can go to CVS, just as you always have.
Yeah.
You won't go towards the Starbucks building. A little white line. It says stop and doesn't allow traffic to go in. Traffic can't drive in. Oh, no. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. No, this is a, a white line that says out only. You're like, like you can't turn to go towards the building. It's not at the entrance to the building. It's rather what? Sorry, oh. So that's one. I'm, I'm gonna go to a couple of other things that included adding stop signs. Again, a stop bar and a stop sign, a stop painting, painted line for stopping on the road. Like you have at a, an intersection. Same up here going out onto Porter's Pass, although even though Porter's Pass is a town road, they did mandate that as well. They also required, so CVS, you can come in the entrance that's further to the east on the CVS site and drive around the property, you know, through the drive-through of CVS and drive around the back. Because you have this travel lane that goes through, through the drive-through and through the exit. They put a stop line there as well and a stop sign, some interior requirements for stop bars and stop signs. That's so I wanted to call those to your attention and make sure that the commission didn't have any issues with that. If you do, please call them to my attention so we can call the state and the applicant and work through them.
Has CVS been notified of those suggestions or how does it?
So Colvest owns the entire parcel. And Colvest is the orchestrating the application overall. They, the property owner is one site. So it's their tenant to notify.
It's a good thing we added that parking. It was going to be if needed, but we decided to add parking to go in at the time of the construction so that they can do that drive-through without, without any issues.
Anyone else?
All those striped all, all the improvements.
Okay, anyone else? No. Okay. No, what?
Let me check off my list if I go, I'm sorry.
So when is Starbucks going?
Yeah, when's it open? You said soft opening, right?
I believe they opened.
Oh, they did?
They're, they, they were getting their CO so they could do their soft opening. Is Chris still in the room? Chris may be able to tell us if they're having a grand opening. Thank you. Chris, do you know Starbucks? I'm, this is more informational because it's activity that Historic District is working on implementing a plan they, they have in their regulations on, in their charge, establishing a tree committee. And they're working to replace street trees along Worthington Ridge that oh, I thought it was coming from here. I'm like, what did I press? Okay. Um, so I just wanted you to know they're working on, on putting together a street tree program to replace trees on Worthington Ridge. Some of the huge trees and, and diseased trees and others have come down. So that boulevard canopy has diminished on Worthington Ridge in the Historic District and, and throughout the Historic District. And so that's something that's exciting that we're working towards. I am try, or they're working towards, I am trying to do a bit of coordination with the tree list that you have in your subdivision regulations, but don't really know whether that might need updating as well. He's, he's in, they're in contact with the tree warden and others, but there's a couple of you here that I would like to ask that you allow me to reach out to you if we find we're down to some nitty gritty details, because I know you know trees way more than some of the rest of us do.
Palm trees?
Palm trees.
Don't like that.
I have um, some information that I've, it's been riding in my car. To share um, with you with respect to uh natives, native species, so um, I'll make it a point to get that to you.
Thank you, that would be very helpful. So, um, this is specific to the Historic District because of the charge they have. And as far as budgeting, having it not be so much wide this area versus that area of town, et cetera. It's um, and actually all kind of aligns with the P O C D to enhance the Historic District. And going through in that way, I do think that the um. The town Public Works as well as grounds would appreciate the. Knowledge that people are concerned that some of the other trees throughout town get replaced as well, and it's come up. With just. Where in the budget do you put it and how does it get done? So, at this point, the Historic District has possibly a path for that. Um, the rest of town is something that they'd be working into their budgets, but I know it's been discussed.
Just that, that uh, people touch those trees, we could do something.
Yes.
I thought we did too, but.
Street trees are in the um, control of the tree warden. So trees that are within the town's right-of-way are under the control of the tree warden. And so by state statute, people whose, who own property. That wish to remove trees that are within that. Right-of-way have to get permission from the tree warden. So um, there are, there probably is, there probably are penalties associated with. Violating the statute um, that. Maybe the tree warden has authority, I think I'd have to read that, but it's under twenty-three sixty-one.
But isn't it, um, but if you have a subdivision and a subdivision clause for the developer to place those trees there. To pr- to provide a canopy for the sidewalk or whatever. By removing all those, those five trees is not that homeowner, owner. Um, in violation of that subdivision agreement?
So I would have to double-check on that, but I believe the, the trees required for the subdivision are the responsibility of the developer. But if they're on the private property, then once it becomes an individual owner's property, they can landscape their yard as they see fit. I believe then it turns over. So that, so that the developer has the responsibility of putting them there, they, the, you're starting the lots. With the trees, but. I own the house fifteen years later and I, you decide you don't want them. That's your private property, right, I believe, as long as it's on your property. If the trees were planted in the right-of-way, they're under the purview of the.
There's that house.
Pre-warden.
Tollgate Road in Olskynski.
I, so, yeah, that's correct.
Here's a lot to say. Some more recent case law about the responsibility of the. Um, and I don't, yeah, that's a, that's. Point of some controversy.
So that, but that's within the. That's within the, the, the right-of-way though. How about if the street trees were, or the, the required trees were planted on the private property? Then it's the owners, once it's. Right?
Listen, I mean, if it's going to a little football, I, I do think. Um, where you could take the position, plus, and plus, of course, there's something wrong. Obviously, um, but um, you know, you, you get, you get into, of course, them not being compliant. But when you're part of the plan, I mean, once you plan it. Because it's required. Important, but.
We'll look into it. We'll look into it and see if we have authority, because I, I think we. Learned something about once, in, in residential, you know, single-family private, once it turns over to private property, but we'll look at it. Um, I mentioned it in the, um, it's the next thing I mentioned in our. Um, during the hearing, FHI is starting to be engaged for some more of the zoning amendments that are in the P O C D. Um, implementation plan with economic development, so that's, that work is continuing and everybody's working hard on that. Um, then, um, I'm, I'm saving the, the best for last, but the next best is Eversource. Has a. Um. Entity that is using a kitchen area within the Eversource complex. To prepare food um, for distribution to, so they're, I guess, manufacturing food. I guess you'd say, to um, for distribution in caf- cafeterias um, through the region, like schools, et cetera. Um, this has just really been something we're, we're starting to look into. Um, but thinking it is a um. Uh. Modification to their use, you know, they had a cafeteria there that, you know, they used as their cafeteria, but I don't think it's in the same. Area, mo- many, many of the school cafeterias now have food that's prepared elsewhere and brought in by companies. The cafeterias are, are managed by companies instead of, you know, have the cafeteria ladies come in at six AM and cook. Cafeteria, that's what they wear. So this is a situation where we're trying to wrangle with, you know, it is a, a, a. A zone where, could it be allowed, is it allowed? Is it allowed because it's, you know, one of the uses in the zone, you know, and trying to work through. Where the approval process is, um. So.
Longton, Longton went through that process with the uh, donut place that was.
Where did I just put?
Fifty degrees, because they started distributing out of that building. When they started distributing throughout, hey.
Yeah.
We just shut it down. That's the same idea here that the.
No, I just wanted to bring to our attention that we do have people online and if we don't have our mics on, they can't hear the conversation.
Food to go go. All right, next.
So I, I have more information on that.
All right, just tell them to cut it out, or they have to come to see us again.
Is working on it, they are probably going to be submitting for some sort of approval, we're going to be figuring out.
Who is?
At the Eversource, they'll be.
Yeah, well, I'd like to see.
In the path, or, or approve, they're looking into the path for approval. Um. This one um, is one of many conversations today.
All right.
That we've been having. Um, it relates to the last lot or last area on White Oak Drive. White Oak Drive Industrial. Um, subdivision. The. Remaining land at the end of the road was. Um. Shown on the subdivision plan approved back in nineteen eighty-eight. As not part of this, this only, I'm reading portions of the notes on the plan. Not part of this section, not an approved building lot. Um, the, the town reserved the right to extend the road, you know, or to do that. Um, and there was a temporary cul-de-sac easement, and there's other notes. Um, as I understand it, the interest we have right now. Is not for further division, but to um, pursue asking for. That lot to become a building lot. Um. No, no, an industrial building lot, an industrial lot, I'm sorry, to, to have one more industrial parcel on, not. Further divide it, not go into next phasing. Um, it was a, you know, approved on the subdivision as not part of this section. So we are working through what approvals may be necessary and would ask for guidance or interest as well. Um, the, the bantering, you know, the brainstorming. Um, we had without a lot of research into the land records, and again, we're gonna have to look to see. What, if anything was filed on the land records with regard to say that extension of the road, et cetera. And there's, there are considerable wetlands back there. Um, in order to extend the road, they'd have to cross the river and to go out to Worthington Ridge, which. Probably isn't really a goal at this point, um, where in nineteen eighty-eight they um, didn't know if that was a goal, but in my conversations with Public Works, that's not. Something they're looking, um.
I would just be interested to.
But it, we're thinking it's probably going to need to come back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to determine. The building lot.
Yeah, I'm interested to see what the original. When the, we, when the original subdivision was done, why it wasn't designated as a lot.
There was a lot of.
No, not yours.
Lot of discussion of that lot uh, not being a, a buildable lot. Uh. I think it was connection to the, to, uh, but there was other reasons, I think you're gonna have to do a lot of homework on that, because. I don't remember what the other end, but I remember the discussions uh, of that lot. Uh, not being a building lot.
My, so my recollection from past, looking at it. And, and again, yes, there's a lot of, um, I think there's work to be done and research, probably both by the applicant and should we get an applicant?
I'm gonna ask Tim to go online and see if you can find that old Zoom meeting back from nineteen eighty-one, okay?
I'm not going online, not that.
Not now. All right.
You never know, we might have the, the eight-track, the, the. Tape recording.
We might have it.
I wouldn't put it in a machine.
It was a long.
Disintegrate, but.
I remember it's a long discussion on that one lot.
So it does appear, in my recollection, is they weren't looking to do the work to pursue making it a building lot at that time. You know, that's why it says section on the map as opposed to. Unbuildable.
But now.
They didn't go through that.
Let's see what, why we didn't do it and what it was in the past and then we'll move forward, okay?
Okay, and this is the biggie.
This is the biggie, everyone sitting down?
So this is Truck Bar.
From who?
Truck.
Oh, truck.
Um, so we've met with them. Um, and we're, we've been working with Truck Bar, where the advertisement that was seen. Um, when scrutinized evidently said farmer's market coming soon. What we've. Done and Polly and Alexa have done a lot of looking at how um. Such uses are, what they're called, how they're regulated, et cetera. Um, is that this is really a vendor's market at this point. They are looking to expand to have a farmer's market, but at this point, it's a vendor's market. Their approval was for an entertainment center, a restaurant in the commercial zone. They did give you specific um, information in their application, saying they were gonna have cornhole and parties and. Um, live entertainment and things like that. Um, our. Our zoning determination, subject to your agreement, is that this is a, an extension to that use, what they came in for. And that they should be coming in and asking to modify their special permit to include um. These vendor markets. Um, I did have preliminary discussions with several other departments. Um, it wouldn't change their build-out use category or, or requirements. Um, might change their category, not their requirements from as far as building code and, um, to the best of our knowledge, without a floor plan, of course. Of exactly where the vendors will be. Um, or Fire Marshal, he doesn't have concerns, he said they're at the, the highest level of um. What he requires because it's a place of assembly where they'd have concerts, et cetera. Um, and they have that, um, the number of occupants, they've already, they're, they're, um. They had, they have all those features in place that they need. So, um, what I would um, suggest. Be, they do have. Um, they, they have started to. Organize for future events, with the next one being on the twenty-first. However, um, I think that they. Um. PNZ should. Request that they come in with an application, a sp- a modification to their special permit. And um, in the interest of facilitating that, you um. Consider scheduling that. Public hearing in anticipation of them getting me that application ASAP. Um, for the. April fourth meeting, April fourth, do I have the right date? My calendar's not in front of me. Uh, thank you, and so that we can, and that's given them getting me the, the information, including the floor plan. You know, numbers, things we can evaluate to determine whether it's um, provable.
So let me just quickly recap, so their original application was not approved for any of this extended vendorisms.
That would be my, my.
Yes.
And I think the whole zoning staff.
Would agree.
Agrees with that.
But they continue to hold these vendor events?
They started organizing them before we told them they were not allowed, be, as you, you know, you called to our attention last week that they.
Okay.
You know, or last meeting.
But they're not seriously planning upon going forward with the March twenty-first.
Um, I think we would like that um. Made clear by the commission.
Yep.
We would, so.
And here.
Should, should an event. Happen, we would take your lead on whether enforcement action um, should be imminent or. Um, if. That's um, not a priority, should they move forward.
Yeah, and the other, the other, Mike, well, well, yeah, but all, also my concern is that. If they change their, if they modify their, their previous approval to allow them to do future events. What's to prevent them from getting away from, you know, tomatoes and basil, you know, fresh cucumbers to. From purses to.
So that is what they have.
Flea market.
No, so that is in, in, no, 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 that's my point. It is a vendor's market that they are holding, um, they have cottage foods um, that have been. Coming or that they have interest in, things like cupcakes and, and honey, you know, local, um, probably things like jewelry. Purses. Um, a number of other items, it's a bunch of different items they have, so um, much like a craft fair, a craft fair, a vendor's fair. So, um, much like a craft fair, a craft fair, a vendor's fair. They, the zone is commercial, you know, it is a property that would allow retail. So the retail, um, aspect of it, that would, in my opinion, fall into retail. However, it's a special, it's a, um, it was a special permit use that they got there, I believe. Now that I'm thinking about, yeah, I read it. It's a special. Recreation and therefore extending it in that commercial plaza to include those uses. I believe is what would give you the purview to look over what, the extent of it. Please ask as all you can, please, because I want to really vet this.
The Board of Health goes in there and checks out their pizza.
They were, they were part of our meeting with them as well.
The Board of Health is aware that people are bringing in food that may be made at home.
So that is one of the reasons that they were told this was not allowed because they didn't have the oversight from the Health District.
Okay.
The Health District does, um, has purview over some, it depends on what they're bringing in. So, um, it, it just depends on what it is and what they're doing with it. For instance, if they have sealed food that's part of the cottage food industries, he really doesn't inspect those. However, if they start giving out samples, it's under, he's inspecting it.
I was always under the impression, because we used to do pasta dinners and we had to get a permit to make and sell tickets to come to this pasta dinner. We could not bring anything from home. Right. Because if somebody had well water and it was contaminated.
Rules have changed with regard to cooking from home kitchens. Again, the Health District does oversee all that and he has.
So it doesn't.
Well, I was the bad guy at the meeting and to quote him and, but he was right behind me. So, you know, we, we, we went through a lot of the rules there. Right, right. It doesn't necessarily, much like at a farmer market or much, but it won't be, hot food wouldn't be being served. They wouldn't be having food trucks and things like that. The, the cottage food, they're called cottage food industries, right? The cottage food regulations were updated just a couple of years ago, um, the legislation. And home kitchens are allowed for a wider variety than probably when you were running pasta dinners, when I was running, doing, participating in pasta dinners. In a certified kitchen, yep, yep, that is all.
And, but to have it inside and now it's turning and it's just, people are just hauling. I mean, it's like a living tag, it's, it's a flea market.
It's no different than the woman that was on Chamberlain Highway and then she started selling jewelry and then she had got her hands that because somebody said she's selling something that she's not supposed to be selling. Where Kokomo wanted to put that.
Yeah, and then New Britain Road, we have a house that every summer always has these big family tag sales and it's like a junk, junkyard, you know, and, and I don't know if she's been doing it lately, but she does that during this every weekend.
Well, one of, one of the.
She's only allowed four a year. She does report to our office, her tag sales. I just wanted to get that. The tag sales, we've put a, we, a number of years ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission put a policy on that for, you know, kind of seasonally, but we wouldn't main, you know, because you might have an estate sale, you're liquidating your house. You want your two weekends in a row.
Yeah.
But we did and she.
She's over.
At least when I was in the zoning office, was regularly emailing. Next weekend I'm having my tag sale. Tag sale number one, tag sale number two, and we were monitoring because we did shut them down on the number of, number of years it got.
Diane.
So with respect to farmer's markets, um, if you go on the Department of Agriculture website, there's a difference between farmer's market and certified farmer's market. Where the certified farmer's markets have a formal market master. And they also require the participants in the market to provide proof of insurance. And, um, so in circumstances where vendors are coming from outside of Truck Bar, particularly with food items, um, I would think that we would want to make sure that they are assuring that these vendors are insured.
So we did actually pull a lot of that information. Alexa has been doing a lot of that search. I don't know if you found the difference between the market, the certified market and the, and the regular farmer's market, but we did find the information about the market master, the person coordinating this, who's not the operator of the Truck Bar, but another business owner in town has identified herself as the market master. What we're trying to determine is if it is the definitional market master. I think that would be part of the application process to make sure that they, um, are the definitional market master that's mandated versus a, I'm chairman of the market. You know, that kind of thing, like where, what are they meeting, um, requirements and whose licenses, certifications, et cetera, do they need to fall under? We don't have those answers and that's why I would say if it's a, if, if something like that would be categorized as retail in a commercial zone, it still needs all these other portions of that identified and that's what the approval process is for.
Yep, but I questioned, it was a special permit, right? Okay, and layout of the building, internal layout of the, the building, bar area, entertainment area, cornhole area, whatever else they had, uh, in the application. Okay, we, we went over that pretty, to make sure that it laid out okay. I'm assuming that if they're having some kind of market, that layout gotta be, uh, changed. Okay, uh, so it's, it's, it's against this special permit. You know, I'm not saying that the, we shouldn't allow it there, but, but I'm saying that it's against what was approved.
That's why we sent them or contacted them initially because it's.
I mean, they, my understanding, the, the markets were very successful, the ones they had, but, uh, you know, they hadn't a lot of people come, so, uh, you know, the ones they did have. You know, so.
Okay, so you need guidance as to whether or not to allow the 21st?
Um, no, um, I think I.
I think you got enough guidance.
Town should, in my opinion, the town should not take the sand to allow it without additional information.
Yeah.
But you could provide guidance as to whether or not we should make enforcement of, noting whether or not they conduct it, an enforcement issue, um, a priority.
And then what is, let them slide? Is that what you're saying? No?
Okay. So I, I think I, I, I think we heard.
Yeah, then you got a little.
On that, so I'd rather not pursue that.
Okay.
It sounds to me like you, you are.
Well, I don't.
Of the same, same mind that they should be coming to the commission with an amendment to their special permit and propose that they be allowed to include these, this as part of their business model for their space.
Yeah, I think it was just a little.
Beyond entertainment, but include the retail, the.
Yeah. It does, it sets a precedence because if you allow it to go on and then say, well, yeah, at your earliest convenience, come on down, we'll talk to you. No.
And, and well, I would like to say, and I actually would, um, in the interest of these being a number of small businesses, a lot of the, the vendors there, that I understand they've been in contact with are local cottage, uh, town businesses, people who, you know, hopefully if they grow, they'll open storefronts. That you preemptively allow us or schedule a public hearing for it. And then we can always cancel that public hearing if they don't, um, get us that adequate information within like by the middle of next week. The problem being I have to run the ads so far in advance for any public hearing that it really puts people out quite a ways.
All right, so, uh, would you like us to maybe make that motion right now?
Or consensus, I think.
Schedule it?
Or allow me to schedule a public hearing as soon as I have, um, adequate information to, you know, as soon as I get an applicant. You know, so I can run the ad for the public hearing, but even though we don't have the information, I don't like to do that because as you can see with some of these other applications we're putting on, we have issues, but they have met with us, they have done a lot with.
That's right, Diane. No, I'm with Diane on this one. You have other things going on and, you know, this is something that they obviously have, they've had a couple of these already. So they should have seen the, um, the, you know, the warnings. And, um, so, you know, they, they need to fill the paperwork out, they need to come in and then we'll schedule them public hearing and stuff. But no, we can't, we can't set that precedence. As Mr. Hamel has pointed out. You're welcome. All right, so that's the way we feel about it. Is there anything else?
I hope not, I can't find my, because now I found the EverSource information.
That's all right.
But I don't think so. I think we have, um, the executive session coming up.
Yep.
Neither of you remember anything else I wanted to bring up?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Did I, and did I cover it adequately, um, for any experts?
All right, so for those, so.
And so then for the executive session, we, um, the things on the executive session, the first item, we do have, um.
Guests.
App, the guests that we would like you to.
Yeah, okay, but for the rest of the public, um, this is going to conclude really our open session for the Planning and Zoning Commission. Uh, we are going to be entering into executive session and, you know, we'll be taking a motion. And when we come out of executive session, we will not be making any decisions. And so we will automatically then go to adjournment. So instead of you folks listening to or watching a blank screen, we're going to say thank you for joining us this evening. And with that, I'll ask for a motion to go to executive session.
Do we need to know who we're inviting?
Well, I thought you'd make that part of your motion.
But I need to know who we're inviting.
All right.
Tim Sullivan.
Jeff Jankie?
New Dice.
Steve.
Engineer.
Jennifer. And Alexa.
And Alexa Gorlick. Planner.
Alexa.
And hopefully Maureen.
Oh, yeah.
Can we not invite Joan?
Okay.
No, how, how many times he blinks? Okay.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. And so I'll add for motion at 9:08.
And then we'll just take a minute so that we can go to the secure room as well as post those doors.
Okay.
And maybe, I don't know if anyone needs to, the room, I might suggest that you.
Yeah. While you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So.
Okay, so, um, I'll make a motion to, um, go into executive session to discuss the following items. The status of pending litigation of 550, 554 Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC versus Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission in the town of Berlin and possible action relating to same. Item B, to consider whether to convene an executive session to discuss the status of the pending litigation of 550, 554 Berlin Turnpike Associates LLC versus Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission and Town of Berlin. Item C, discuss the status of pending litigation of 1906 Berlin LLC versus Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Berlin and possible action relating to same. Item D, to consider whether to convene an executive session to discuss the status of the pending litigation at 1906 Berlin LLC versus Planning and Zoning Commission, Town of Berlin and, um, that we invite Maureen Juisty, Jennifer Coppola, Alexa Gorlick, Tim Sullivan, Jeff Jankie and Steve Judas.
Okay, we have a motion to our executive session. Do we have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Rogan, for the discussion, all those in favor. I, as opposed to move.
And you included adjourned the meeting and then, or rather going into executive session. So I'm going to close out the, I'm closing out the public.